I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, November 8th at 7:07 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for the zoning Board of Appeals, proposed amendments to the regulations governing fees and fee schedules. Public hearing is now open. Would you like to walk us through?
Sure, thank. Thank you. This is exactly the same copy that you had last meeting. Again, the biggest difference from what we currently have to what we're proposing is language that clearly defines that the Board can utilize Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, which is utilizing outside consultants in the manner that you can utilize them, as well as 53G, which is actually 53G's outside consultants, E and a half is town staff. So that basically, the taxpayers aren't subsidizing the project and the project applicants are covering the cost for professional services. So that's really what this is about. It's laying out the parameters for recouping that. And that's not to say it's going to be for every project. It really is intended to be for the special projects that might require some expertise or specialty services where you might need some help in reviewing applications. So what would happen on a typical application, we set forth the fees as, on a typical, on every application, it's $150, which is what you currently charge. It's $7 per certified butter, so if they have 10 of butters, it'd be $70 or, you know, any fraction thereof. And then we would also collect a fee for the advertising. If there were more public hearings in a particular night, their fee would be less. So we put in 200 as the base fee, assuming they're the only applicant, but then we would of course reimburse them for anything that, if we had several projects, it would cost less per project and it'd be proportional. So that's the, what we call the administrative portion of the fee. Generally, it's 150 bucks and those other things that I mentioned.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Who is going to be determining and administering the fees? If they're, if they, if we can choose and determine certain things and how many and whatever?
So, every project that comes through the door will pay this administrative fee. When a project comes before the Board, we will not assess an E and a half, a project review and inspection fee at that point. It'll come to the Board and the Board will say, wow, this is complicated. We would like you to set up an account with the department and we would solicit bids from consultants or we would get some kind of fee structure in place and then the applicant would put money into an account that the town manages. And then we would draw from that account to pay either staff or outside consultants for the review.
Like we did with Up Round North.
North Brown, correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that was a little different because we have separate 40B comprehensive permit regulations which govern that. This is for the day-to-day applications. And again, I don't expect we're going to need project review and inspection fees on 99.9% of the projects, but we might get a complicated one here and there where we might need some help.
So if the Board feels that they need outside consultants, there's a mechanism now for-
Correct.
-for the applicant to pay for it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Do you have any questions for Bill?
No, I do not.
Not with regard to this.
All right. The Board want to proceed?
I'd like to move that the ZBA formally adopt the fees and fee schedules as the, has been presented and we've discussed.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to adopt the proposed fee schedule and regulations, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
You discuss non-criminal dispositions?
Sure.
Is there a fee for that?
That's not in here.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
You were not letting me talk to him?
Yes, we did. I literally hadn't had a chance to even think about that. Go ahead.
So, as the bylaws allow for Douglas, I could issue a ticket for zoning violations. The Board should set a fine, definite amount. State law says you can't, it has to be less than $300 per violation. But the Board, if you take that to the judge, they'll say, where'd you get this fee? Because it says up to. So that means I could charge one guy $1 and somebody guy, they don't like $300. So I would like to have a-
We can do that without a public hearing.
You can. I mean, the public hearing was really to solicit this from the public. And technically, I don't think the hearing was closed, so it's still open.
It's true it wasn't.
Adele used to always do $200 and I don't know who she got that number. I think the state recently went up in the last couple of years, did they not? Pretty sure it's $300. Yeah, no, I think it went up to 300.
Yeah.
I think it was to.
Per day.
Per violation.
Right.
Does it matter what kind of violation it is or just it's blanketed as the $200?
No, John, if you don't raid your driveway, it's $300 a day.
Three? She just said two.
No, it was two. We're going up to three.
What's conservation? They get a, oh, they do. They charge.
I don't know what they mean.
$100.
I know, I pay it all. I know because I pay it all the time.
Well, they can go up to 300 per violation.
Okay.
I agree he should go up, but-
Larry, don't they typically get a warning? Like you got 14 days to solve?
I issue a letter that says, you know, you're in violation. And then I'll give them a second letter that says, you know, if you don't comply, I can fine you. I'll give them two warning shots and then, you know, come on.
So you're thinking 30 days? You're thinking 60 days before you will?
That's administrative. That's Larry's job. I'm not getting involved with that.
No, I'm just curious what he's thinking.
Again, it's a lot of times squeaky wheel gets the grease, so if it's some neighbor that's trying to sell their house and people have a junkyard next door-
Yeah.
-you know, I gotta do something and I gotta do something faster because somebody's trying to sell their house.
So they get a couple, two warnings, so I think if they don't comply after two warnings, the only option left is to fine them.
The second warning, well, seven days after? Typically?
Yeah, typically I have a kind of a form where it says-
So basically, they're getting 14, 14 days if they're correct? I think that's reasonable.
On Cardinal Drive, I had, for one, I had the, got the place looking like a junkyard. I plead them, please put our stuff in the backyard. You got enough land. Hide it. Do anything you want to do with it, but get it out of the front yard, okay? And he says to me, because I got a couple lots up at the end, he said to me, well, you know, something, blah, 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 look at that guy over there. I said, yeah, I'm going over to talk to him. So the guy said to me, listen, you know, things are a little tight this year and that day. I said, listen, I'll give you the dumpsters for nothing. Clean up your yard. So he said, okay, when you sending up the dumpsters? I said, I sent them up this week. I sent them up, two dumpsters. He filled them up. You look at the yard nice and clean. The other guy, man, I told him, I said, you know, you think you're in the hills of Kentucky. I mean, I'm just not that kind of person, but if someone, you know, if someone buys a house, are they going to be crazy? Am I right or wrong? I mean, that's in, you know, that's in town. That's in town. That's not far away. And he said, I don't care. You know what I mean? You gotta call the building commissioner on me. I said, I'm not going to call the building commissioner on you. I said, but you're going to get yourself in trouble.
All right, Mike?
Back to the fine. What would your preference be daily?
Well, I'm not here every day, so it's-
If we're going to talk about the amount of the fine, we should talk about the frequency.
I have to, you know, I document. So I'll take a picture of the violation, put the date stamp on my camera. And, you know, I'll either hand it to them or nail it to them, but, you know, it's one of those things where it's going to be kind of hit or miss because I'm not here.
But if the violation-
It would be at least once a week.
It would be per violation per day. And I think that's the way it should be formatted. And then if he goes out once a week, then it's-
Nothing's changed. You know it's been that way for seven days.
Yeah.
But they couldn't find it seven times because he's only got evidence that it's-
Correct.
Well, if it hasn't moved, I mean-
No, I understand.
So really, you're doing it on a one-shot type deal, hoping that it's going to get cured? I just want to kind of give them a push.
You want some teeth.
Mike? Convinced to be enforced by the police department on a daily? I don't think that's a good situation.
Building inspector.
Well, that's why I asked the question.
But even at a hundred dollar, I mean, whatever fines a fine, it's still going to sting a little bit. And if it's once a week, I get out there, it's still, you know, and it's a process to even collect it because you have to go to court.
I guess if you're going to pay $300 a week, you're going to pay attention.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, it's not, it's not, it's not as though they're paying.
He has to go there and he can't go there other than once a week.
They're not paying on a daily basis, though. He's going to take them to court, so it's prolonged. It's not-
Right, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have to take a picture every day to prove. I mean, if you go there, took a picture today and you went, a week later, nothing's changed.
I don't know how-
It's my understanding that you have to physically go out to the site and observe the violation. You can't go on day one and then on day seven and then find them seven days.
Oh, okay.
You can only find them twice then.
Oh, I realize. Okay. You gotta remember the former-
So you need an assistant? Maybe we need to increase that up to, town gets to keep the money, right? Bobby goes in the general fine. I mean, reality is, if you, if the town needs more help doing that, then that's how you get more help. That's how you get an assistant.
Mike?
What if they don't pay the fine?
Then you have to take them to court. Yeah, that's the problem.
Usually, the court knocks it down or negotiates it.
Well, there's got to be some mechanism to try to, try to get people to comply.
You can't lean from-
Money talks.
I'm not aware of that.
Well, I remember the former, the previous building inspector was a fine per day. And that's how it was written. I remember looking at him, it was per day, fine per day.
Oh, is it written out per day?
Like I say, I could go out there every day.
If he was available.
I mean, summertime, I'm a little bit more available because it's daylight out.
But I mean, if somebody had half a dozen unregistered vehicles and they, you went back a week later and nothing had moved-
Well, again-
You wouldn't have a physical proof.
Well, that's your job, but we just need to-
It's always a judgment call, in a way, because the cars didn't appear there overnight. You can't really expect them to be gone overnight. But, you know, nothing talks to people like money. So it's a real motivation type of thing.
Mike?
Could almost be like a case-by-case thing. If he's going out there once a week and he gets to the point where he's issuing a fine and nothing happening, then he can make a decision whether or not he wants to go out there daily or twice or three times a week. But he has the ability to fine every day if he needs to.
Right, so if we do it on a daily basis, then whatever Larry-
So we just need to tell him how much he can write on his little ticket and he's going to go.
I personally have no problem with $300.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with $300. He'll get your attention.
So do we need to make a motion to make that? So I make a motion, excuse me, that the fine for violations of zoning rules, $300 a day?
Second.
Bill?
Just for clarification, I will add a non-criminal disposition section to the bylaw which goes over those values and amounts on the fines. And I'll run it by town council.
All right. We have a motion by Len to authorize the building inspector to find, the ability to find people with zoning violations up to, oh, $300 per day.
Right, you can't have up to.
Yep, per day.
$300 per day, per event.
All right. Second?
Second.
Oh, okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make those edits. I'll have it for your next meeting.
Okay.
So you can close the hearing if you like.
Okay. Shall we do that without having the-
You can wait till the next meeting, too.
I think we should wait.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in case, is it?
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
Is that the 13th at 7:00 PM?
Yes. So we have a motion by Mr. Membora, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to continue the public hearing till December, what's the date Maria?
13th.
13th at 7:00 PM.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is CBA case number 2017-07. It's a public hearing continued for Don Farino, 294 Northwest Main Street. This was a case that we opened up last month and there was a question whether he needed, he applied for variance.
Yes, he did.
And town council was consulted and he needs a special permit. He had a pre-existing non-conforming structure and a pre-existing non-conforming law. So town council confirmed that he does not need a variance in any way, shape, or form. So I think we can close this public hearing. And in talking to Maria, I think Mr. Farino is having plans drawn and he's going to plan to come to next month's meeting.
I see. We close it or keep it open?
No, because he, his, the application was for a variance.
All right, so it'll be a meeting.
So, you know, and the other, and we discussed, because there was a mix-up there that-
Right, no, I remember that. And so we have an open meeting on a variance, not a budget.
And in talking to Maria, there was a little bit vague as to whether we're going to waive all the fees or just the administrative fee. So I guess we need to discuss that.
I thought we were going to waive all the fees because he's already mailed out all the mailings, right?
That's my understanding, too, but I just, when I talked to Maria, we were unsure, so.
Okay, I wasn't the understanding. We called because of one of the-
That was my understanding at the primary meeting. That because there was a mix-up, he was giving the wrong information, basically.
So the application fee, the mailings and the advertising-
Yes.
-will all be waived?
Yes.
All right. So-
So you need to close the public hearing, right?
Yes, for case number 2017-07.
I can't, I'm a butter of this guy's sauce.
Oh, sorry, Bill?
Technically, I think the applicant should withdraw the current variance request.
Mm-hmm.
And that would, you wouldn't have to vote or you should still close, but you should accept a withdrawal for the variance request.
That way, we're not-
Correct.
-taking any action.
Correct.
And preventing him from doing something.
Yep, that's what we do now.
So a little wait.
Eric, can you represent?
Yes, I represent with Heritage Design Group. I'm here on behalf of Don Farino. So, and we'll send you a letter just requesting a withdrawal. Send a new application for the special permit.
So you're giving us a verbal request, they'll follow up with a written request?
Yes.
To withdraw?
Yes, please.
All right, so the applicant's asking, I think we just have to accept the fact that they want to withdraw, so. Everybody wants to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application of 2017-07.
I wasn't here for the meeting, so.
Okay.
So move.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you next month, Eric, at 7:15 if everything, we just got to get it in time so it can be advertised for.
Yeah, we'll try and get it in tomorrow.
Oh, great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is another one on here for the same reason?
Yes.
It's next one down.
Yep.
What about the one? One, is it?
I think it's moving.
Is it moving?
Yeah, it's just, okay. All right, the next-
It's almost right, isn't it?
No, it's just-
It's almost right, too.
All right, we have two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes of October 11th. Maria, could you also make, just make a note that Sean's absent, unexcused absence?
I wish I'd thought of it.
Did I give you the right one?
Ah, this is May.
It's October.
I'm looking upside down, this one. September.
May is only three letters. October, I couldn't make any more. John.
She didn't give it to him, either.
I think that was the fourth of the last one.
Yeah. Oh, here we go. That was on October, right there.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yes, it's even in a minute about absorbing the cost.
Yep.
as written. You think, John, there's a, it should be amended to this because it says here that Mr. Gini stated a special permit is needed as well as a variance, but I think a special permit is needed, not a variance.
Not a variance, yeah, you can do that. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And that was on the second page in the top paragraph and then again on the next case, it's the same thing. So we have a motion by Mr. Membora to accept the minutes as amended, those two ones.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes of October 11th are approved as amended. The next agenda item is the continuation of the public hearing for Robert Parent in Carroll, Longland, 12 Roslin Road, case number 2017-08. The applicant here, present or representative?
I think Maria's been communicating with them, so.
No, and I had email conversations with them this morning and I thought that they were coming tonight.
You thought they were coming here tonight?
Yeah, I, well, I reminded her that the meeting was tonight. I thought that they were coming. They know about the hearing.
But can I just interrupt, Mr. Chairman?
Sure you can.
But Maria, did you not speak to them about the need for re-advertising and did you not tell me that they haven't gotten information to you in adequate time to do that?
Yes, but they're getting their application, they're going to be submitting it.
Okay, so they, they know that we're not hearing anything tonight and that we're really not expecting to move forward.
Right, right.
So perhaps the next time, maybe we should continue this public hearing, give them the opportunity to withdraw, or if they come in next month.
They're not here.
Yeah, I thought they were coming.
So without them being here, I guess we continue the public, does that make sense?
Yes.
And then ask them if they come in next month, if they want to withdraw.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have a motion for that effect?
I'll move that we continue the public hearing on case number 2017-08, Dolan's on Roslin Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Membora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're being at 12, 7:15 on December 13th.
I think everybody got a copy of-
I think that would be 7:30, no?
No, it's the second one.
So the next one, we guess that's the 7:45.
Right.
No, we're talking about Maria.
Next, so next month.
7:15.
Well, we were doing the public hearing again at 7:00, then we're going to do Farino.
Oh, that's right.
And then, thank you.
You're right.
That's okay. I hate to do it.
No, I, I'm-
First time.
She wrote it.
She was like-
I forgot what the other caller was hearing.
I got to use it anyway, just on hearing stuff. You don't mind, you don't mind.
And I think we all got a copy of a notice of violation for the property from the building commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, my opinion would be he has to clear up his violation before he tells the courts.
Well, actually, you know, we were talking about how Larry can clear up some of the things.
I know that, but we had the, that other, that other house that had the shed that was six inches from the line, we couldn't even talk about it, but we had to talk about extending his living room house.
Yeah.
Remember that one? So, I don't know if we can hold up the process over this. But I do have a question on this.
Hey, go ahead.
Any of this hooked up the utilities?
They have a pole there for temporary utilities to build a house. I don't think it's been hooked up to the grid yet.
So this, this trail is not hooked up?
Not hooked up.
Is anybody staying in it?
Not that I'm aware of. So this does bring up a question that I kind of wondered about this, getting this after the fact. And I'm, you know, I mean, I guess I'd just ask the building commissioner if something has come up on a property that we're going to review or whatever, that we'd be at least aware of the status, you know, whether or not this problem's going on? No?
Is there a question?
Well, no, I just, I just, we didn't, we didn't have this before our last hearing.
Because it just happened after.
It just happened after.
13th?
Yeah.
The day of the law.
Okay.
And I'm, you know, I mean, I guess I'd just ask the building commissioner if something has come up on a property that we're gonna review or whatever, that we'd be at least aware of the status, you know, whether or not this problem's going on, no? Yeah.
But, is there a question?
Well, no, I just, I just, we didn't, we didn't have this before our last hearing.
It just happened after.
It just happened after?
13th?
Yeah.
Day of the letter.
Okay.
See, my other question would be, Mr. Chairman, is that should be here, be, the applicant be aware of our feelings regarding this, this violation? Get to clear, try to clear it up before our meeting, just give them a heads up.
I'm not sure how it could be construed.
Well, this may be one of those situations that it's a per day thing.
Yeah.
Right, we can just let Larry do his thing, now he knows what, what, what he's allowed to find.
That's true, too, yeah.
And then...
You can go, I don't ask those questions.
Yeah.
But if he's being ignored with his, with his violation notices, not getting any response, so, any action taken, then at least after our next meeting, he should have a little ability to do what he used to do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask Larry a question, so do you write a physical ticket?
Yes.
Okay, like every day, so you'd be like, one, two?
You're like the meter maid.
Like the meter maid.
Zips up on a little scooter?
Jeez.
Directly petition for a scooter.
That's hard, that's hard.
You got me forest, I have nothing for you now, a little scooter, I can see head up there with a little scooter.
Larry, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Hello ma'am?
Hi, I live on 28 Roslin Road.
Could you just state your name and address?
Patty Dix, 28 Roslin Road.
Okay, thank you.
I go by this property every day. I came home on Saturday, not only that there is a round box, like a meter, Saturday they reinforced the holding of the meter and put up a square box underneath, like I would have in my house. My most concern is with everything they've done between beginning of July, the end of July, and then putting the, filling everything in, they got rid of all the trees, and they did a lot of fill, they must have had 20 trucks of fill in. They put the trailer on the farther side where Mr. Valancourt's house is. It's sinking with all the water, it doesn't have time to pack down. It's literally sinking, and underneath the wheels, and the way they have it braced, is all being washed out. My one concern is Mr. Valancourt's granddaughter and grandbaby, or it's gonna end up on the next street because there's nothing to stop it from going down that little perch. It's, the trailer's up here, they got it graded off, and then it's level, and there's nothing to stop it. And you're talking about a house trailer.
Right?
Last time you seen this Larry, was there electrical running to it?
No.
No.
Before last meeting, I drove up there and there was no, there was there, but there was no power. Wasn't connected.
If it's possible at Larry's next convenience, convenient time to go up and check it and see what the conditions are, see if they're moving forward with it, or is it hazardous, give them an indication of what's going on.
The stability of it, I, when I, when I saw it, the trucks were insufficient at the tires, so, after the rain.
Yeah, but if it's sinking, then the mud came all over.
Even the braces, the front end and the back end, they're washing, everything is washing out, even with the boards.
Which, I mean, actually, he needs, rather than bracing up, he needs to take it off the property.
Yeah, no, not looking for him to brace it up, I'm concerned whether or not he's hooking it up. She's describing a electrical panel underneath the meter socket.
That's it.
So if that's the case, are they planning on continuing on their merry way?
Excuse me, is that temporary electricity or?
It's a temporary light pole.
They spent about four hours bracing that pole, they put longer...
Given how would you get that unless electric, unless the electric inspector okay? Are you okay?
I don't know.
Well, you had to, mass electric wouldn't hook it up to...
I don't think it's hooked up.
Well, it was a, it was a private truck. I can't remember the name of the, the company on the side, but it was a pickup, and it had all its...
But it's not connected to the overhead wires yet?
Not yet.
No, so...
So he came up.
Just getting ready for it.
Yeah.
Is it a construction trailer, are they gonna build on the lot?
No, it's a house trailer.
Are they gonna live in the trailer?
Well, they were told that they could live in a trailer, but the guy down the street had a camper when he was doing his house and living there at the same time. Instead of having a camper, they brought a house trailer in.
So they're just gonna use it till they build ours?
That's what we were told.
They can do that?
No, they can't.
If the house was damaged by fire or something, but you can't do it just because you're gonna build a new house.
You can get temporary housing from a company, you can't just go and buy a whole home and...
I guess the whole trailer situation up there, I, you know, I'm unclear as to whether we should be having them. I guess there's supposedly no trailers, in fact, when I went up, there's a sign, but there was another trailer down there, down on Shore Road.
Correct, correct, and I just found out tonight before I came in, that trailer that's on Shore Road, people are staying there because there's a house on Arnold Road that they're redoing. So they can't get the trailer on Arnold Road, so they parked it on Shore Road.
The way I would read something like that is that if you have the house there, and you like going out camping, you have the right to put your trailer on your property, which you're not. So now that we're in a situation, this guy doesn't even have a home there, you put the trailer on it. That's, I think that's an issue, there's no house there.
Yeah, but this isn't a camper trailer that we're talking about.
That's what that says, it's a camper trailer.
Recreational vehicle.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Mr. Chairman, another question for Larry, so has this Mr. Parent contacted you at all yet?
I've talked to him a couple times, and he's been aware of it.
Because this has been almost a month now?
Yeah.
Then when you have another, an adjacent property owner come to a public hearing and express concern, I mean, this raises the issue of safety that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, I would think.
Right?
Larry King issue will fine until the next meeting?
Well, Adele's issuing $200 a day.
But he said that he has to have something that...
No, it's in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, he's good.
But what's he using the camper for, that's the thing, if he's using the camper to build another house? Okay, see, it's...
Believe, it's not okay.
Can you show me that in the zoning book?
It is not okay, maybe okay in your life.
That's all I think. You can show it to me in the zoning book, I'll go along with you, till then.
It's like a person has, if a person puts in a foundation, he can live in the cellar for six months. That's the state law. If he's constructing a house, he can have, he can live, he can have temporary for six months. It's a state law, not the town law, it's state law. Okay, I mean, all depends what the guy's doing here with the trailer. Now, if he put up temporary power, is it temporary power? Does he have a stick in the ground, a thing in the meter on it with a socket?
Can we get verification on Attorney Tassino's interpretation of this?
You know it, you know it.
He only comes up on Saturdays, too, he comes up on a Saturday morning, him and his girlfriend, wife, I don't know what she is, but they come up on Saturdays, they do everything, and then they're gone by mid-afternoon.
What are they doing?
You know what, this is probably enough, back and forth, I think.
Okay, well, check it out.
Larry will let us know next week.
Check it out, Larry, will you?
Thank you.
If it's on Shore Road, you know who owns Shore Road, the judge already told you that.
Yeah, you got the right to maintain that.
I do.
If we do get Larry a scooter, can we get an all-wheel drive?
Jeez.
Larry knows that he can find it.
Do they give a color, yeah?
Let's see.
I got nothing.
Okay.
However, maybe, maybe some fines will get somebody to, yeah, do something.
Alright.
Alright. Next agenda item is case number 2017-09, it's the continued public hearing for Richard Colts, 185 U Street. And at our last meeting, there was a question as to whether the lot was still grandfathered or the lot wasn't. We did get our correspondence from Town Council. I think everybody has a copy of it, but... Oh, you don't, John?
No, I got, I'm gonna try to get it.
And I believe the voting members on this, myself, Mrs. Holmes, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Tassino. So, for the Town Council, the grandfathering did expire on October 9th.
09.
I'm sorry. Council 09, thank you. The variance would be required to make a buildable lot.
So he's already filed the paperwork for such, the variance? So, green cards and all that?
Yeah, we listened to that last, last month, the question was...
Whether or not we can?
Well, whether or not he needed a variance, it was mentioned that they, that he may still be grandfathered, but Town Council's confirmed that he's not.
That's where there's all them lots, and he's got one lot in the middle.
Right, there were several lots, there was one lot in the middle. The other ones have been sold and built on.
Yeah. I think it's the last one, isn't it?
No, it's in the middle, but...
Crazy.
Which one?
Yeah, second one.
Yeah, second one, yeah.
That's Locust Street.
So the application was for variance, and it, so it was confirmed by Council. That's why he needs it, no longer any grandfathered rights.
Yeah.
So he's gonna get a full variance?
Yes.
And so he filled out the application for it last month to certify that, so...
The applicant here, would you like to join us?
I think I'm good right here, that's okay?
One of the questions Council did have was whether all these, I assume all these lots were in common ownership? Was it from, from, in your relatives' possession, all of those lots at one time?
Uh, no, it was just the one lot.
Oh, they just bought the one?
Yeah, they bought the one.
Alright.
Excuse me, your father-in-law bought it.
My father-in-law bought it, yeah.
My father-in-law, and he never did nothing with it, that's all.
But Town Council had, had, in a conversation with me, asked me if, if they had owned all the other ones, because if that had been the case, you essentially created your own hardship.
Yeah.
But he didn't own them all, he just bought this one.
Are they all built on?
They are, yeah.
Any members have any questions for the applicant?
No, I'm good. I really don't take any issue to give them a variance because it, because the land has been up there before. Fact of the matter is, I haven't concerned with, that happened before, the time ran out on, on these things, and I, I just can't fathom how something like that could be written up and accepted, whether it be, what was it, back in the 80s, when it started? That if you don't sell them by this date, they're gonna grandfather out?
I think a couple of things happened.
Yeah, it's just kinda funny the way it all happened, and again, I don't take issue with letting them sell it and build a house, I just, they would complete the road, they would complete the lots, and that's my feeling.
Me, too. Well, we did have a case, I think when I first got on zoning board a while ago, very similar to this. Fellow owned a larger area, built a house in a residential area, moved out of town, and then decided that he wanted to use that backland. It was not, not, not doable because the zoning didn't, it didn't match the bylaw, in other words. And it had run out, time had run out on him, and the people that, that owned this, these properties know that. This gentleman knows, knows that everything ran out as well, as well as his, his father-in-law knew that it was running out, and chose to do nothing about it.
Oh, I totally understand.
So, you know, I, I don't see, I have no compunction saying the town, Douglas has no obligation to extend again, because it was extended three ti, yeah, three times.
Was it extended three times?
Well, the bylaw ran out, as I understand it, or the, the ability to use it ran out, and then there was a grace period, and that grace period ran out.
His grandfather threw 04, and then there was a five-year grace period after that.
Yeah, so, and then it wasn't even purchased until four years later, so...
The only difference I recall from, I remember that other case, matter of fact, it was on the same street.
Yep.
Is that the, the applicant in that case owned two parcels, side by side. So he, he had them in common ownership, which the Town Council refers to as was held in common ownership. So in that other case, the only difference that I see there is the other one, the guy had two lots side by side, and he, I guess, created his own, his own property. Here, they only bought one lot, and granted, I mean, if you're a property owner, you should be on top of the changes, but...
You never know, sometimes people get sick and they get, you know, they just...
That's happening.
Who struck the time? But it's one lot that finishes off the rest of the four lots, I don't see nothing detrimental to the rest of them, I mean, I don't.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know I abstained from this because I wasn't here for the meeting last month, but I appreciate the discussion, and I've read up on this here.
So, it was a similar, similar case, but...
Sure.
But he owned two lots, that guy?
The guy owned two lots side by side.
That's a difference, different animal.
Yeah.
This guy bought one lot, he was gonna do something with his kids, or do something, he had ran out on the pork, how old is he?
Was that your father-in-law?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So you're only three years older than him. Is he in good shape?
He's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, what the hell?
Does the Board have any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, I, I do not know.
No? If not, we could close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, would the Board like to make a decision this evening?
I would, I'd like to approve the variance on case number 2017-09 for the lot.
Was John, John is older than this, right?
It was, what? Yeah, you were here last month.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was my...
Are you questioning?
Oh, you went, you went.
You didn't say John the first time, so I'm going, so am I missing something?
No. Is John, Mike?
Was that a motion?
Yes, it was.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve their variance request for Richard Colts, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
We have Fitzpatrick, Mr. Bombara, myself, and Mr. Tassino in favor, Mrs. Holmes opposed. Your variance is granted. We will draft a decision, get it signed, and we'll file with the Town Clerk.
Okay.
There's an appeal period, when your appeal period runs out, you can pick it up from the Town Clerk and get it recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
How long is the appeal period?
Twenty days.
I believe 20 days.
20 days, yeah.
And it may take us, it may be a few weeks before we can get it to Town, to Town Clerk.
Okay, so it's 20 days once Town Clerk gets it?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay?
Sounds good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll try and get it before Thanksgiving, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Only the other way around, we have?
We did it, no?
Yes, we did, yeah, and...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and our next meeting is December 13th. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Demure, all in favor?
I got the same, aye.